Thompson.
Here.
Grenat, Gray, Jerem, Milton, Pauls. Mr. President.
Please stand for the pledge of invocation by Councilmember Mike Thompson.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rather than a traditional prayer, I'd like this to come along the same. And, uh, for example, I was talking to students at the Omaha Hall the other day and figuring out that our country is going to most, uh, gas companies, all cases of the earth, and get it to extrapolate, uh, out, you know, say, with probably the most administration of those people involved. So I'm thankful for that. I'm also thankful that Omaha has got us some good readings, uh, the best place for this, the best place for that. We have a procession there as well, and I'm thankful for that. I'm also thankful for the fact that we have one of the better police and fire chiefs in the Midwest, don't you agree with me? And, uh, so I'm very thankful for that. Uh, and I'm thankful for the fact that even though there are some young people that cause problems, some of the shootings and stuff, for every one person that kind of go there with, there's twenty that are doing good, and I'm very thankful for that. We don't always hear that on the news, but I'm thankful for that. And then last of all, uh, least, you know, I've been thankful for the fact that even though tomorrow, on my birthday, I'll be sixty years old, um, I look fifty, and so I still, I look good. Those are my thoughts.
Can they vote on that?
City Clerk's certified publication on the data record, the official newspaper, on March 7th notes, where we're council regular city council meet March 11th, 2014, at current coffee, the openings act is posting a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Don't be so shy.
I was gonna say, I saw a bunch of lights light up in that last column, I'll raise them for now. Good afternoon, and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public, and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it's not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic device.
Zoning ordinance on final rating planning board attachments will take items five through seven as one case. Five is ordinance to approve the Vinton Street NCE District Plan for the City of Omaha, located in an area generally bounded by Castlar Street on the north, 13th Street and 15th Street on the east, Deer Park Boulevard on the south, and 24th Street on the west. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Six is ordinance to approve an amendment to the future land use element of the master plan to allow for increase in residential density within the area. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And seven is ordinance to amend the boundaries of the NCE-C District of the Neighborhood Conservation Enhancement District to incorporate to that district property generally bounded by 17th Street on the east, Elm Street on the south, 19th Street on the west, and Bancross Street on the north, and to approve the amendment to the urban design element of the master plan. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public carers on agenda, items number five, six, and seven are today. Are there any proponents? Mr. Moulton.
Good afternoon. Jed Moulton, the planning department. It's my pleasure to introduce your consideration of the NCE for Vinton Street. It's been a two-year effort. Uh, this is our third NCE for the city. Uh, we see it as the most advanced NCE that we've created thus far. Uh, we've been able to address some land use, necessary land use changes, some necessary zoning code changes to help facilitate development that's compatible and conducive to the environment. And, um, we've addressed some of the approval processes to make those easier as well. So in the end, this is our method of trying to facilitate redevelopment, reinvestment in existing neighborhood centers, and we, uh, look for your approval. I'll be here to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents today? Ms. Spellman.
Um, Mr. Councilman, President Council. Um, I'm Connie Spellman, 705 North 57th Avenue, Director of Omaha by Design. Omaha by Design was a partner with the Planning Department in the creation of the historic NCE, and we strongly urge your support for this new measure. Omaha by Design provided the funding, um, for the project with Jensen Consulting. We also helped to coordinate the communications with the Business Association, who were integral parts of this project. Omaha by Design does three kinds of project, uh, planning, um, demonstration projects, and capacity building, and this project really incorporates both planning and demonstration because we really feel that this NCE overlay can be, one that can be used, um, many times across Omaha, particularly in the historic areas from Vinton to Florence and Benson to Gretna. Uh, we also think because of the participation with the State Historical Society, this can be a model for, uh, Main Street communities across the state, so it has great replication abilities. Omaha by Design has partnered with the city in planning projects numerous times, but I think this one was particularly important because of the engagement that they had with the property owners and the business owners and the Business Association in Vinton. They were really, uh, had an opportunity to understand why the historic characteristics of their building were so important to understand, value, and protect, and they did that by a really wonderful interactive process with the Planning Department. Uh, I certainly learned a lot, and I think Councilman Grenat, who was attending those meetings, saw the buildings in different ways when you look at each component, from the front door to the windows to the roof lines. Uh, and so there was a value associated with the learning. Uh, the other thing that was important, I think, was that they were a major part of the decision-making. Uh, they were, the business owners had the ability to determine the level of regulation or guideline that was appropriate for the existing buildings that were there. And once they decided what was appropriate for them, then they also had the opportunity to look at, what if new buildings come in? What if new businesses came in? What were the characteristics that they would want them to adhere to? And so it really provided them with a lot of ownership about what was happening in their own corridor, and I think that is something that's very important, so that we protect and preserve the unique characteristics so we're not looking like a cookie cutter city. So I think this is an opportunity that does that, and, uh, it's one that I really urge your consideration for. The last component is that, um, the contract also held that consulting companies would put together a guidebook that we could give and distribute to all the other historic corridors in the Omaha area and elsewhere to help them prepare their areas in order to qualify for historic NCE. So I think it has lots of value for the community as well as for all the neighborhoods, and we strongly urge your consideration of passage of this series of bills. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Are there any other proponents that want to speak today? Mr. Ferguson.
Hello. I'm Larry Ferguson. I live at 1701 Vinton Street, right in the heart of the historical Vinton Street Business District, and I want to tell you, Councilman, that we are absolutely thrilled to be able to have worked with the city and the city's planning department, Steve Jensen with Jensen Consulting, especially in through there, Jed Moulton, Chad Weaver, everyone else in that department who helped us write up the reports and held countless meetings at my studio and elsewhere with our councilmen, financial people, our merchants and property owners, and I want to tell you, I don't think we've ever had such an engaged set of business people in a set of public meetings who came together, actually attended, and the majority of all of them voted consistently to have higher standards of design and help retain the historical integrity of this area and to provide guidance for future projects for the wonderful city of Omaha. Uh, I would hope that you would follow my lead also with the rest of our business people in helping to approve this designation for the NCE overlay to help us maintain this historical character and move forward with such wonderful decisions as new buildings to build, doorways, windows, painting, signage, and other concerns that all of the city has. So I would hope that you would all please vote yes and approve this motion for us. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? See none, any opponents? Public carers closed. Oh, go ahead, sir.
Hey folks, this afternoon. I'm Jerry Sandow, 27-25 South 19th. I have no reason to leave the state right next to Ryerson's Plumb, which is a commercial residential. I'm all for the program, and I'd like you folks, before you make a decision, to walk down Vinton Street and look at the buildings that this man has designed for you in his mind. The principle of all is that when you see it for real, you'll see what you're looking at. The principle of all is I like the foundation what you're starting on, it's great. The historical thing you got going on, it's great. It could make the city prosper really well, but what I'm saying is that when you look at the faces, you'll see the arch deck with the original former was built. That's what they want to preserve. My question is, the principal of the property that I own, I have no problem working with you folks. I just need a better foundation of what you're doing, so I'll wait for the paperwork to come out on that. Other than that, I'm all for the idea of what you're doing, but I'm just a little lost on the paperwork thing, and that's all I just wanted to say. Thank you, folks. But please do take a look at the buildings first before you make decisions. That way, you're making a solid foundation for what you're deciding on and what you're doing for the whole city as one, because there's a lot out there that you haven't seen, but it's best to see by eye to make a better decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents today? See none, public carers closed. Mr. Grenat.
And it was an excellent point that was made. I think it was President, uh, to that point, this is a tool that's going to be in the kit that forces everyone to do exactly that, to take a look at what the character is, the foundations are, starting from underneath the sidewalk all the way to the top of structures. And, uh, so that that's why I'm glad that we've gone through this two-year process. We started thinking about this about three and a half years ago, uh, and two years ago, it started to get legs, and today we've walked into the chamber to get that tool put into the toolbox. So it's a good point, and it's going to be an effective tool. I think it allows the, Jed, would you come back up so we have something on our record here for a minute?
I'd like to clarify that.
Just repeat your first name for the record.
Jed Moulton, Planning Department. The historic preservations of the plan only relate to buildings that have been previously surveyed through the State Preservation Office Survey Program that we do. So not every building has preservation standards, only those identified as being worthy and having enough integrity to preserve. So there are many buildings that some of those provisions will not apply to.
But then again, the mindset of everybody coming together and making sure that, say, a developer does come in and has certain ideas, number one, they're open to, uh, they're going to have to be open to listening to the folks that, and property owners that are in that area and those neighbors that use that particular area, to that gentleman's point.
Correct. This will be the, kind of, the opportunity for engagement. As with many zoning policies, ultimately, the property owner has discretion to demolish a building if they choose, but if they, under certain circumstances, if they do want to rehab the building and they seek tax agreement financing, we'll have a set of guidelines now that are more established within the norms of preservation that we can refer to. They're not the highest standards, they're calibrated, a medium-level standard that we, the district agreed to, so.
And it also allows that flexibility.
Right.
In the thinking pattern and working towards a final product.
Correct. The plan itself outlines objectives, sets of values, important things to consider. Ultimately, there is the ability to get waivers, to make, have flexible decisions made, but we have now an established baseline of concern and points of interest and things that we should consider before we make decisions.
Awesome. Thank you. And a huge thank you to the Vinton merchants. Mr. Ferguson, thank you for opening up your doors to, and also taking the time out to go door-to-door and let folks know what's happening, get them gathered, going through this awfully long process to establish a great tool that's going to be, I think, as a model that the rest of the city can use. Deer Park Neighborhood Association, a huge thank you to them as well, and to each and every one of the merchants that were on Vinton Street that participated. Doors are always going to be open, and let's take this tool and let's do some good with it. So with that, I make a motion to approve.
Motion in a second, and I would just add, that I fully support this today too, and Councilman Grenat, I mean, I know you've been working in the Vinton Business District for a long time, and it's great to see this progress along with all the partners that are here, and.
Since I was nine.
That's more than two years. But we hear this does take two years to do. That might surprise some folks, but it really does, to get that kind of consensus and buy-in and the door-to-door with property owners. But when you do that, you get a much stronger project, and a much stronger overlay that'll serve the Business District for many years to come with that buy-in from everyone involved. And we've done this now in Dundee and soon here in Vinton, and on South 10th Street, too, and I think it's a great tool we should keep doing in the rest of our business districts across the city, which have that same great potential for preservation and economic development and better design standards. So with that, we have a motion in a second, and we have one more light, Mr. Pauls.
Mr. President, I want to challenge the, uh, the brain cells of my friend to my right. Can you, because you've been in that area quite a while, do you remember a place called Rendezvous?
Do I want to admit that?
Well, the only reason I'm saying is it's changed its name now, but I can remember a guy from the west part of the city going down to the Rendezvous, and I would go to this place, and there was so much history, and I know it's changed ownership in the meantime, but the owner, uh, he took me upstairs, I mean downstairs and throughout the building, and I was so impressed because he showed me all the pictures, because he had famous baseball players and had gone to this establishment over the years. So it was just fun to see, uh, the, just what the city had in its past, and, uh, I'm sure with the change of ownerships that we, you know, we've lost some of that, but the stories this gentleman told me about all the people who frequented that place, and, like I say, they were people with, uh, who had names, and I just wanted to, you know, I'm glad. Yeah, oh, yeah, right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Yeah, just quick to mention to my colleagues that Friday is Grenat, Mr. Grenat's birthday also.
He's going to be sixty-two. I'm going to be much older than him.
He looks like he's about seventy-two.
You better call me.
I won't do the comb joke. You won't hear me say that.
I'm not doubling into that one. Motion in a second. Roll call. Thompson.
Yes.
Grenat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President. Yes.
There, five through seven are past seven to zero. Eight, nine is one case. Eight is ordinance to rezone property located northwest of 28th and R Street from R7 and GI to R7 medium-density multifamily residential district. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Nine is ordinance to adopt a parking overlay district. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public carers on items number eight and nine are today. Proponents, please.
Doug Kellner, 10836 Old Mill Road, here on behalf of the applicant, available to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Mr. Kellner. Any other proponents? See none, any opponents? Public carers closed. Roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Grenat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
There, five through seven are past seven to zero. Items 10 through 13 is one case. Ten is ordinance to rezone property located at 4534 Madison Street from R3 to DR Development Reserve District. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Eleven is resolution at the replat transmitted here with entitled RC Platts First Edition Replat I is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And twelve is subdivision agreement is hereby approved. And thirteen is a special use permit, uh, to allow outdoor sports and recreation in a development reserve district located at 4534 Madison Street is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public carers on items number 10, 11, 12, and 13 are today. Proponents, please.
Dave Akins, I'm just asking for approval so Tony and Victory Ride can finish the rest of it for us.
Great. Your address, please, just for the.
My address, 12459 Deer Hollow Drive.
Great. Thank you.
And I have a comb problem, too.
Is it your birthday, too?
No, into the month.
Other proponents, please.
Don't open a gift Friday, right? Um, Dan Dolezal, Airheart Griffin Associates, 3552 Farnham Street, on behalf of Victory Riding Stable. Normally, I would just say, we're just here for questions, but this is such a unique project, I'd like to take your, a moment, just to kind of describe what Victory Riding Stable does. If you read the packet, it's a therapeutic riding academy, and as I sit and listen to Tony and Jody, um, it, this is some amazing stories and success in what they do for people in wheelchairs, special needs. They talk about an autistic child who developed a bond with a horse and started talking after several weeks. I mean, there are some really, really incredible, they'll bring tears to your eyes, I guarantee it. With that said, if you have any questions for Tony, he's in the audience, but we ask that you approve the special use permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? See none, any opponents? Or proponent? Yes.
Tony Barnes, Victory Riding Academy, 4534 Madison Street. Just appreciate the opportunity to be able to be part of this and to be able to be in the community, be able to give back to the community. We offer riding therapy for kids, adults, and veterans with special needs. We also offer a Horses for Heroes program, which is designed for police, fire, first responders, military, and their families to be able to come over and ride at nearly no cost at all, and we're hoping to be able to, in the next couple of years, be able to offer it free of charge, be able to give back and say, thank you for your service and thank you for your sacrifices. But we just appreciate it if you guys would go ahead and approve this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? See none, public carers closed. Mr. Grenat.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's been quite a while since I've had the first thirteen items on the agenda for South Omaha. The Madison Street project is going to be a gem. I saw the diagrams of what their dream of, because right now, there's a house, there's a few barns, there's fence, there's ground for outside riding. In the near future, we hope that there'll be indoor/outdoor facilities and taking Tony and his wife's dream to the next level. And I appreciate you, Tony, offering me a ride on the horse when I got my initial thing. That would have not been a pretty sight. We've, we've got an opportunity to, something in a gem in an area that is bounded by residential, commercial railroad property, and do something that is going to be, uh, just basically awesome for those with disabilities, our veterans, our first responders, and anybody that has a love for horses. So with that, I make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Grenat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted. 10 through 13 is adopted, seven to zero. 14 through 17 is the next case. 14 is ordinance to rezone property located northwest of Pillsdale Road and Skyline Drive from R1 single-family residential district large lot to R1 single-family residential large lot. 15 is ordinance to rezone to R2 single-family residential district low density. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. 16 is a resolution at the replat transmitted here with entitled Skyline Oaks III is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And 17 is subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
Public carers on number 14, 15, 16, and 17 are today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Todd Whitfield. I'm with Lampar, Neers, and Associates, 14710 West Dodge Road, uh, here on behalf of the applicant, would answer any questions if I have.
Thanks. Any other proponents today? See none, any opponents? Public carers closed.
Motion approved.
Roll call. Thompson.
Yes.
Grenat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
There, five through seven are past seven to zero. Eight, nine is one case. Eight is ordinance to rezone property located northwest of 105th Street from R1 single-family residential district large lot to R2 single-family residential district low density. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Nineteen is a resolution implementing a platent titled Pull in Place Along with Touched Conditions hereby accepted and preparation filed as hereby authorized. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Twenty is the replat transmitted here with entitled Pull in Place is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And nineteen is subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
Public carers on number 18, 19, 20, and 21 are today. Proponents? Mr. Kellner.
Doug Kellner, Thompson Street Dorner, 10836 Old Mill Road, here on behalf of the applicant, will I answer any questions if you have?
Thank you. Any other proponents today? See none, any opponents? Please.
Good afternoon. My name is Matt Mullen from 10552 Mullen Road. I live across the street from, um, where the buildings, where the two homes were, and that currently been demolished, and now we currently have dirt. We, while we appreciate what the owner is potentially trying to do with the property, we continue to still have concerns as far as what's actually going to take place, what might take place down the road. We, as a neighborhood association, have had a lot of meetings over this sort of last six months. It took the applicant three different meetings that ever got through the planning board. It was mixed. It's just been, we just feel like we've just continued not have all of the information that we need to have a good, solid plan as far as what's going to go on across the street from us over on Mullen Road and 105th Street. We're also concerned about the quality of the project as well on 105th and Mullen Road. Right now, it's just been dirt. There's been a for-sale sign-up for a year now, and there's no action, nothing really taking place, and it just is making the neighborhood just kind of look like a little bit of an eyesore. So I also have a neighbor of mine that would also like to say a few words, but we do want something good to happen to that spot. It's a three-acre lot, great opportunity. We just feel like there's just not enough going on right now, not enough really kind of back and forth between us and the owner, and that's kind of where we're at. Nancy Estabrook from our neighborhood would also like to say a few words.
Good afternoon. Peek-a-boo. It's, it's a. What?
Your name and address.
I know, I know. I'm Nancy Estabrook. I feel like my husband and I are probably the longest-living fixtures in the neighborhood because we built our house right straight across the street from the proposals here. And our house is fifty years old, so you know we're not spring chickens. And we also had another house before that, just one block west of this property. We, I wish that somehow, somehow, we, who are the interested parties, would be able to have some information about the proposed project, and they have promised, but their promises are zilch because there has never been any proposal or any information given to be the neighbors who are living there and are probably the most interested folks, naturally. So how in the world can we get information about what is cooking? Can anybody put a bomb under them to give us the information we'd like to have? Can anybody put a bomb under them to give us the information we'd like to have?
I think we can ask...
It's really, it's like we're living in a very large fog. So how do we get that? How do we...
Yeah, we can ask...
It's been the biggest stall I've ever lived through. I'm tired of looking at dirt across the street, just dirt. We agree?
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. We appreciate all of your fine work.
Thank you. We'll have him come back up here in a minute. Are there any other opponents that want to speak today? Please come down.
Yes, I'm Robert Cochran, and I live just south of the proposed project. I apologize for being late. I got caught up in something else, but I would just briefly say that, that living right next to it, I would hope that we put something in of quality that... And I think that hopefully the builders are committed to that. I personally have a concern why this needed to be rezoned. All the neighbors, including myself, are sort of unanimous that we didn't think this needed to be rezoned from R1 to R2. And I think that testimony has probably already been said that this was sort of a debated issue even among the planning board where it was not unanimous. I guess those are my major concerns.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other opponents here today? Seen none, we'll give Mr. Kellner a chance to respond. I know we have some lights here.
Originally, when this project started, the applicant had planned on building their house on Lot 2, which would be this lot here. Some personal items have come up now where they don't feel like they can build on it anymore. But as you can see, I think, on the drawing, it's... Each of the lots will be approximately an acre in size, so they're significantly... You know, they're pretty large lots for residential-type development, which is what it's being zoned for. Right now, the lots are not sold to any other person, so they don't know what kind of house will be built on it. It'll have to be a house, but... And the amount of money that the person has invested in the property will not really allow anything other than a large house. But the developer does not know much more about it than that, I guess, unless you guys have some specific questions that maybe I could help with. But until they sell the lot, they don't know what type of house will be built on it.
Okay. We'll go from there. Close public hearing and recognize Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a question. It seems like there's some issue of people not understanding what's happening, and I found just by your comment now that the developer does not know what's going to be on one of those lots. I mean...
Correct.
So if I lived in the neighborhood and I saw my neighborhood torn up, I probably would be displeased. Is that... What's...
Kurt Hooper is involved in this development. They don't necessarily... They may not get the rights to build on the houses, but they're trying to work with the owner to try selling them. They built a pretty nice house, and I know that Steve Huber from Kurt Hooper has gone around to the residents and discussed it with them some, and I have not been part of those discussions.
So you're telling me the neighbors understand what's going on, too, as much as you...
Yeah, it's a residential subdivision.
I'm not hearing that today. I did not hear that. You know, I think if, probably, the neighbors want to see something nice go in there, and I know with that developer, it will be nice.
Right.
But also be... Would you mind having a meeting with the people, and we could lay this over?
I don't believe that'd be an issue.
See, I think...
I know Mr. Huber's been talking to them in the past, but there's no time constraints to this where we couldn't have a layover on this project.
I just think, you know, it'd make the neighbors more pleased with what's going to go on in those areas. They know something is going to be there someday, but I've heard piles of dirt and things like that. I have not been in that neighborhood, too, at this moment, to be able to describe that myself. So to me, logic says that we could solve some of these problems if we would have a meeting.
I'm not so sure of that. I know Mr. Huber's had the conversations with them. It hasn't been resolved. He doesn't know what houses are being built out there and can't tell them what house will be built.
Okay. Well, that makes me feel all more in need of holding it over.
But, yeah, I don't have an issue with holding it, laying it over.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Kellner, is it?
Yes.
Do you know if those lots are going to be split into equal parts, or are they going to stay in those dimensions, or what?
They're going to stay in these dimensions.
In those dimensions, okay. And again, you're not against a layover?
No.
How long of a layover do you...
Well, I'd like to talk to some of the individuals.
Okay. Let's see. Yeah, come on back up. And you have to say your name again.
Yeah, I'm Matt Mullen from 10552 Mullen Road.
What would you like to see done, sir?
We... I think Dr. Cochran's point, too, I mean, I think we're still concerned about ever being really R2, which was kind of debated for three different meetings at the planning board level, because our homes are all R1. And I think that just not... Not from the owner's side, it's just not vetted out as far as what are they going to do. Now, the owner wants to, you know, we're not sure what's going on with the gentleman that's having health problems. And so to Nancy Estabrook's point, we're sitting on a three acres of dirt right now right at the corner. And so maybe Bob Cochran can say a few things, because he's really even adjacent to the lot more than I am, but I think it's just, we're still just unhappy about how it went at the planning board level. And Bob, do you want to say a few words as far as what you would like to see?
Yes, Bob Cochran. I think he is correct that Mr. Huber, Steve Huber, has met with some of us, but we've never met as a group. I think that our big concern is that dividing this area, and it's a unique parcel of ground, those of you who have seen it, and I think that our concern is that many of us built there because we do like large lots, we like room between the houses. Our concern is, why does this have to be R2? And are they committed to just putting three houses there, or what's going to...
So you just want more information?
Yes, that would be...
Are you asking for a one-week or a two-week layover, or what?
You know, it depends what kind of information they can give us. In a week, it might be the same question. I guess we have... I think a lot of this is beyond control. Like we said, the gentleman that built here paid a large sum for this house and then unfortunately became ill and is not going to be able to build his dream house there. I think he wants to recapture his investment by dividing this into... Although the lots sound big, and they are tentatively big, but why do we need to rezone it so that we can... We're going to have these houses, my understanding, within 10 yards of our property. I guess I... We just don't know enough about it. I think that's our concern.
Well, it's...
And when is it going to be done?
I would be willing, sir, to support a layover. This used to be my area, so I'm aware of the people there and the needs, and then it got rezoned out. But I'm willing to support what it is that you're looking for. Don't go too far, though, because others may have questions of you, but you can have a seat in the front row.
Thank you.
Right there.
Thank you.
And city planning, if someone could weigh in on the issue of they wanted a waiver for sidewalks, but you're saying, "Let's deny that," is that correct? Planning?
I'm sorry, James Dale, City Planning. They have requested a waiver of the sidewalks, and per our standard conditions, we do not waive that. There are not sidewalks, and that's waiving should sidewalks be put in. Currently, there are not sidewalks in the area, so we're not requiring sidewalks be installed. Only if they are installed in area, they will not protest, and we would install sidewalks at that time when everyone else does.
So it doesn't have to be... Sidewalks don't have to go in right now?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm done. I'll yield the floor.
Thank you. Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. Only have one question. That's of the developer or the attorney. Why R2? What's the necessity for R2?
Probably the largest reason is some of the setbacks, as they described. These are likely going to be very large houses on these lots, and there's several large trees on there that they're trying to maintain, and some... Reducing the setbacks a little bit will allow a little bit more movement of the house to try to preserve some of the trees out.
So the setbacks are the reason?
Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's my only question.
Thank you. No further lights at the moment. Mr. Pauls.
Mr. President, it still seems to me that I hear one side telling me that they don't have the information, and the other side saying that they're willing to give more information. So we just need to lay this over so we have... So both groups can get together and...
How long?
And just let me use your experience. How long would be an adequate amount? I...
They should be able to accomplish it in two weeks.
Yes, I would think in two weeks.
Second. Motion to lay over two weeks and continue public hearing, right?
Yes.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's laid over two weeks, and the hearing is...
And it's up to Mr. Kellner to make sure that it happens.
Thank you.
Resolutions, Ray Platt's, item number 22, resolution that Platt entitled Country Club Estates located southwest of 66th and State Street is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item number 22 is today. Are there any proponents, please? Yeah, he's gone.
My name is Scott Los. I'm with Lampar, Neerson, and Associates at 14710 West Dodge Road. Here on behalf of the applicant, and available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents today? Seen none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Before I call for a motion in a second, I'll just say this is in my district, and I think it is a good project, and I didn't embarrass him the first time he was here, but I see he's here again today, your partner, Pat Duffy, who's, I think, involved in this project and also was a main factor in the U.S. Open Championship here in Omaha last summer nearby this project. So that was a huge win for our community. We thank him for his work on that, and it couldn't have gone any better from our perspective. Motion approved. Second. Roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Liquor, item number 23, The Brass Monkey, 5611 South 36th Street. Class C liquor license and application, new location.
Public hearing on number 23 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, I'm Brock Hatterman with Tap Boys Incorporated, 4930 South 77th Ave. Here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seen none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Garnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Hatterman, your record indicates that you had a little run-in about five and a half years ago...
Yes.
...involving an alcohol offense, and you're probably aware that government stresses quite often that make sure that you abide by the law. You're the one that's going to be working and running an establishment. You have to run it by the rules. You have to obey the rules. Just capsulate for the council, if you would, please, how things have changed since then for you, so you'll be able to cooperate with law enforcement and those officials that regulate alcohol.
Absolutely. I currently have a Class C liquor license in Ralston. I own and operate the Village Bar down there for the last two and a half years. To your point, following the law, I take it very seriously. My little run-in was not an excuse, but it was a holiday party-related incident that was no accident, no nothing. It was a huge mistake on my part. I take it very seriously. I take the laws very seriously in my current bar, and our biggest objective is safety at my current location that I'm running right now. We've been very successful down there. That bar's turned around extremely fast in the last two years to the positive side, and I hold my employees, too, that help me out, very highly accountable for their actions, and I just... I take it very serious. I've grown up a lot in the last five and a half years, so to speak.
That's what I want. Pretty much the same type of operation, local neighborhood bar, same hours of operation, participating in the community, that type of thing.
Yes. Yeah. We're... I had the opportunity this year to actually partner up with a charity event at my other location, and I really want to stress that this year. It's a pretty good feeling to help somebody. I've never been involved with somebody like... Something like that. Kevin's actually here that owns the building, and we're going to continue with the Make-A-Wish in the neighborhood, the Make-A-Wish fundraiser, and, yeah, we're just going to keep it a nice little neighborhood bar.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Motion to approve. Roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's laid over two weeks, and the hearing is...
And it's up to Mr. Kellner to make sure that it happens.
Thank you.
Resolutions, Ray Platt's, item number 22, resolution that Platt entitled Country Club Estates located southwest of 66th and State Street is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item number 22 is today. Are there any proponents, please? Yeah, he's gone.
My name is Scott Los. I'm with Lampar, Neerson, and Associates at 14710 West Dodge Road. Here on behalf of the applicant, and available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents today? Seen none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very briefly here. Mr. Kelly, I... First of all, I appreciate both of you. We had a conversation outside, and you would go to a Class I, and then you want to be back probably in about six months or so. I think your point is well-taken, that I think some of the neighbors misunderstood what this was about, and I would... And I guess I'm okay with the I. That's what I had offered, and if you want to come back in six months, we can do that. The other thing we could do, and I know you don't want it to stay closed for very long, is to lay it over and...
Yeah, yeah. This probably wouldn't... Had we got the thing filed more timely, we wouldn't have even had to give notice to neighbors, because there's been a bar there for 30 years at this location. So we'd like to kind of get up and move in, so...
Okay.
Rather than lay it over and come back, I think we just accept the I for now.